I now call to order May 17th, 2021, meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees, current time 6:04. Let the minute show that we're in is present with all members in attendance. Please rise for the invocation to be given by Mr. Trout and remain standing by pledge of allegiance unto the Texas flag to be led by Mr. Mixon. Item two on the agenda is consideration and action on the order of authorizing remarketing the district's variable rate, unlimited tax school building bonds, 2018, and other matters related. Therefore, Mr. Doug Witt, how are you?
I'm doing good. It's good to be back.
Can you at least keep the presentation to under two hours?
I can. I can definitely do that. In fact, this may be the shortest one I have, but if you don't mind, I would start off with did play in the golf tournament on Friday and a shout out to all those who organized and put that together. That was a well-executed event and proud to be a sponsor of it and enjoyed playing. And if you've never played with Mr. Castleberry, he's got something called a chipper putter.
Okay.
If you've never seen it, you must see it because it's the most remarkable golf club I've ever seen, where you take a putter, you hit it out of the rough, over through a trap.
So that's Mr. Castleberry has a chipper putter?
Yes.
Wow.
Don't tell them about the chipper putter.
Yeah.
That's a legend.
It is. There's the legend of Bagger Vance and then there's the legend of the chipper putter.
I don't know if he's on Bagger Vance, but.
Anyway, I was, Dr. Powers was there with me to witness it and it was, we had a great time. We enjoyed being a part of it.
We appreciate you helping us out with that. So.
All right. So do have a presentation on the screen and I will try to execute it. There we go. So again, we are here tonight. This is not the big workshop talking about issuance of new bonds and bond models and tax base and all of that. Tonight, we're doing a housekeeping item that's going to be to your favor, but in 2018, we issued the 2018 bonds, 60 million, which was one installment of the bonds that were approved by the voters in variable rate, soft put mode, as we call it. The rate was fixed there under the second and the third and fourth bullet point with a 3% coupon rate and initial yield of 2.17%. That's a very low yield, but you'll see momentarily in today's world, we're going to lower that yield and reset the rate. So we put it together with a three-year tender period that goes to August of '21. So we're here tonight seeking your approval of the ability to reset that rate at a lower rate. About 10% of your overall principal is in this mode. Rating agencies and other financial analysts believe that you can go up to 25%. So 0 to 25% is available and we're currently at 10%. We like the mode and I'll tell you why just on the next slide. We talked about the advantages of this and this is, we talked about it before, but just to recap, it's long-term amortization, which school building bonds are long-term amortization, but with short-term interest rates. We're able to lower the rate on these bonds to create future bond capacity. So the lower interest cost on these bonds, the better our bond capacity is for the future. It also gives us early optional flexibility. We don't have that often with 30-year amortization with a 10-year prepayment period we have to have expire. With these, we have a three-year payment period and when that comes up, we have the option to prepay on principal. So it provides for fast-growing districts, tax rate, bond rate, management capabilities. And so you'll see in fast-growing districts, the utilization of these items. It's been a huge success since 2018 and as I go to the next slide, it's going to be another huge success when we reset it here this summer. So the current bond market conditions are shown here on the traditional fixed-rate bonds. A one-year maturity is .15% and a 30-year maturity is 2.95%. These are very low rates. And then the term rates or the variable rates, one year is .25%, .5% for a three-year, and .95% for a five-year. So what was a 2% rate for the prior three years is going to come down to below 1% and that's going to provide interest cost carry savings on these bonds. It's slightly different when we talk about refunding bonds for savings. Those are fixed-rate bonds over a long term, going to fixed-rate bonds over a long term. This is a reset. So by resetting it at a lower rate, we're lowering the carrying cost for the next three to five years. The timing, we're here tonight seeking your authorization to delegate authority to the administration to complete this. We'll do some due diligence in the middle of June. We plan on locking in the remarketing in July and closing on August 16th, which is the date that the other bonds have to be put back to the market. So that's the reason that we have this timing. So we're here in May seeking your authorization to complete this. There will be some work with the administration leading up to July with the closing of the remarketing and reset of the interest rate in August. As I mentioned before, your voters approved 200 million. We sold 60 million in 2018, followed by 60 million in 2019, and then 50 million earlier this year. You have 30 million of authorized but unissued bonds. Tonight's meeting, y'all usually hear me talk about your bond model and your tax base and so forth. That's not the purpose of tonight's meeting. It's to reset an existing and do some housekeeping. But at the appropriate time, as you work through your facility and building program, we'll come back to you and talk about your bond model, your tax base and so forth. But just a small summary of that, your tax base is outpacing growth percentage than your student count. You are growing into a more traditional, fast-growth district where your tax base is what builds our bond capacity. Before, we had to measure student count because we were a function of state aid and your student count mattered. Your student count will always matter for the facility needs and the space needs that you have, but as your tax base has grown so rapidly, it allows us to concentrate on that as the factor and resource for bonds and bond capacity. And as you get to the end of this 30 million and you start looking out into the future, we are way ahead of schedule. We had a seven-year model that's looking more and more like a five-year type of model. And so we feel very, very confident. I told some staff that basically I'm as optimistic about your prospects from a less worry of being able to get you what you need as soon as you need it at any time since I've been working here over 20 years. So that's the quick version of it. On the next page, next slide is the optional redemption dates. These are the bonds that are eligible for refinancing or refunding. That's slightly different than remarketing or resetting. But you can see here, we did a refunding earlier this year for some significant interest cost savings. The first three series of bonds on here are very small, very tiny. In the middle, you see call date. You have a $1, $2 million piece that's callable or prepayable anytime. August 15th to 2021 is $6.5 million. We're not talking about doing anything with those right now. Those would piggyback on a bigger bond issue that is a reissuance or a new issuance of bonds rather than a remarketing. When you get to the 2013, that's our first significant bond available for refunding or refinancing and that optional redemption date is 2023. Then you work your way down the amount in 2015. We do have a big refinancing coming up sometime in the next three to five years. We will be lowering those interest rates as well. It's just not the right time to talk about it or do it now. We just completed the one that y'all approved earlier. So with that, the next item is the suggested motion. I started with a shout out. I have one other if you don't mind. You're getting here into May and I think you've got a graduation coming up. This will be your second class of graduating seniors in very interesting times, to say the least. Some of you may know this, but I'm a son of an ag teacher that became a superintendent, a son of a nurse who became a school nurse. And I work with school districts throughout the state of Texas and clearly people who are on the front lines in hospitals and COVID wards and so forth deserve a shout out. But those who are educators, who work with kids day in and day out and what y'all have had to do for this year and a half period is pretty remarkable. So as an outsider, I'm telling you, thank you for your service to the kids and your community. So with that, there is a suggested motion at the end that will allow us to proceed forward with this resetting of the interest rate. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Oh, the board ends this closed meeting at 8:18. We'll now reconvene in open session. Item five on the agenda is reports and proposals from board members. Does anybody have anything other than Mr. Trout? Mr. Trout, you have the floor.
At our construction facilities planning meeting, all members were present with guests, Ms. Heine, to talk about the comprehensive third high school. We discussed the name and color. Ms. Heine provided an update into naming and the colors, mascot selection process for comprehensive highway, high school highway, high school number three. That recommendation will be presented today. Mr. Carroll provided an update on the work for NCHS annex that was damaged due to the busted pipe during the February freeze. All the staff should be back in there by mid-July. Bond projects update by Mr. Gates. Key for crossing, Mr. Gates provided an update about New Caney Mud. Reports that the water and sewer will be served to the campus shortly after Memorial Day. The campus is on schedule for August of 2021. Mr. Gates reported that the work on comprehensive high school number three continues to go well, tilt walls, everything else. And we discussed Porter Elementary replacement. Mr. Gates discussed with the committee the potential to move Porter Elementary replacement project to the Click property south of the current campus on Loop 494. He will be investigating that possibility and make a recommendation for that project soon. Yes, sir. I'd like to welcome Ms. Heine up to the front to talk about the process she's gone through with some folks on naming high school number three and getting colors and mascots and all that kind of stuff ready for you guys. Ms. Heine, it's all your.
All of the things that we felt as community represented the ideas that we wanted this school to embody. So we present to you tonight our consideration, Westport High School as the name of comprehensive high school number three. The next chapter began with color and mascot. This committee had representatives, student representatives, parent representatives, athletics, and arts. We wanted to make sure that this group represented that we have voice from all people. Again, our objective was to provide a list of recommendations to be considered. Some of the things that the committee considered as we started talking about this, the committee said that colors should be standard for branding. And so therefore, we're going to create a consistent look over a period of time. We also said that it needed to be unique and distinctive. The school, they wanted to know that when someone else was competing against another community, I guess, they saw that they stood out. It wasn't the same. They also found that the mascot should be representative of the school, should be strong. Again, they have requested that they receive additional information once the name is approved. Through the committee, we were able, through the facilities and construction community, we were able to do that. And after the initial meeting, we came back together, typically, our task. And the committee came to consider the consistence on the following colors and mascot. So tonight, we're asking consideration for the dark green, the dark blue, and the Westport High School.
I'll just comment on the process. I love what you went through. I mean, one, I love the thorough experience. I think that's not really going with the whole theme. But no, I love the process that you went through here, that the district went through to get the buy-in and going back outside before we closed off, like the students who are on the committee that are going to be prospective, side of the class. I think that's great. How we got their buy-ins and they feel like they have ownership of their school. Except we saw from three back four.
And that process.
Yeah, no, it was actually nice.
And bringing in sales.
And then draw the board and then request for the student to know.
And that committee, that was a different group. So that group, we had gone through the process. Everyone had a background and shared information with them. People came with ideas. And so that was an idea that they came with. So the mascot, the colored people learned that later after, I'm not permission to say, they really felt like in order to build a whole more in, that they needed additional information to really tie the name in with the colors and the mascot.
I appreciate you all the hard work. That's the important thing about any of these schools, that we actually use the process and the process work without an R and B. It's certainly predetermined way before the process was ever even done. Because I mean, these people put their time in. They took time away from their parents. And it's wonderful that we use our employees like this and we use employees, we use our students and our parents. So they're bought into the process and truly let the process work itself out. And I'm glad to be great, you know, great in the field because it's very something. Once we get them too close, it's a big problem. We appreciate you. That's exciting news. Wonderful job. Thank you so much.
Next on our list, every year, Dr. Powers and his team do a great job with lasting impressive videos from our seniors this week that rolled out here in your appreciation week. So just wanted to share those with you guys through. Just really have a lot of the great work they did and just support for our new career businesses as well.
Teachers, they form a student into what they've become in their career, right?
Not only are they the most important people of our society, but they're also the most unappreciated.
They want to start you off on your path.
The reality is that next to parents, we know that teachers have the most influence on students' lives.
We are shaping the future, the next generation of people because we are teaching them not just our subject matter, but also life skills of how to be a better person.
I know teaching a therapist is kind of like hectic.
You know, this last year hasn't been easy. And the fact that they still go to school and they still like, you know, tend zoom to be able to teach people that can't come to school is a pretty, you know, amazing thing that they do.
I just think that they do wonders here. They go above and beyond what they are supposed to do.
It helps to have just so your mind here whispering, you gotta keep going. And there's my handful of teachers on campus that specifically fill that role for me.
My health and physical education teacher, Dr. Bridges.
English teacher from my tenure, Ms. Hollier.
I want to thank Mr. Huawei.
They can stick.
One of them, be Mr. Gomez. They provide opportunities that you just generally wouldn't get anywhere else. And that really does make everything else here stand out from a different high school.
This is by far the best group of educators I have ever had the privilege of being around.
Thank you for open arms.
I can be myself. So I would like to thank my teachers for doing that for me and making me into the name I am today.
Some teachers may not think it, but they actually have an huge impact on us. Like, we come to school every day and we spend, I'd say, a little more time with teachers than we do with our parents for some kids.
So I think teachers are important because they inspire us to be passionate about something.
I can think of so many times where teachers have lifted me up and made me feel better, even if it was just a tiny comment.
And I don't think they really get the credit that they deserve as teachers.
Even over a tough times, it was still like really nice to be here and all the teachers were always so kind. And I feel like there's a really good staff here and that's, it's nice.
With all the obstacles and the difficulties that we've had this year, we've overcome them and we've reached our children and our community and families. And I couldn't be more proud of our teachers and our staff this year.
You make my job easy. You really do. When there's something that needs to be done, you're jumping, no hesitation.
The past four years, but even before that too, I have loved various teachers I've had for the longest time.
Porter High School is so lucky to have such amazing fine arts teachers.
Mr. Fortner from the history department.
And my architecture class, my teacher Miss Dearest.
My choir teacher that I have.
I still remember teachers from when I was in high school to this day that influenced me in many, in many ways from lying today.
Even if there's like white kids, you know, being like married, not a good year.
A lot of students really love our teachers, you know, and something that should consider more.
They just being cool and just, I mean, overall being people who actually care about how we're doing throughout the day.
For that, I just want to say I like it.
I feel like teachers are important to us because they give us the basic needs and help to get us through the actual reality of the world.
Everything they do helps benefit not just one, but many students. They just inspire us to keep going and help us learn new things and do proper education.
I think teachers matter a lot to each and every one of us because they are practically the role models of our society, whether we want to see it or not.
Especially this year with everything they've gone through. You have to take on double the work online and in person with us.
They were learning what we were learning during the pandemic.
Who made it through this year. And going into this year, we knew it was going to be impossible.
Teachers have pulled together and planned together more than I've ever seen in my entire career.
They are the frontline people that see kids every day and oftentimes see our kids more than the parents see them.
I'd like to say thank you to Sergeant Lang and Karen Lardle.
Teacher I would like to thank is my mom. She was the great teacher at Oakley Elementary School.
I'd like to thank Mr. Anderson.
I would personally like to thank Mr. Villainsby. He's always pushed me to my full potential, even when I didn't want to be pushed to my full potential.
They make the work so easy for us to understand and to pass because if it wasn't for them, I probably wouldn't be eligible for track.
They have experience so they know and they're guiding us through that journey.
I don't think there are words that can thank them the way they deserve to be thanked.
Y'all find new ways to like simplify everything for us so we can understand and like be able to like use this information in the future for where we go to college or where we start our lives. Just thank you so much.
I probably should have thought before that, after that. So the next thing on our list is a little COVID update that is still in our world. So just wanted to run down some bullet points and Dr. Powers and his team put this information out this week. So hopefully we will be having congratulating ceremonies behind me this week on the 20th, 21st, and 22nd. So just protocols, we will do those events. Masks will be worn at the discretion of the individual. It's not recommended or required, so it's up to the individual. We're going to recommend social distancing between different family groups if possible. As we've been into the summer, we're going to use this as kind of a test today for next As we move into the summer, we're going to use this as kind of a test date for next school year. Again, masks will be worn at the discretion of the individual. Beginning June 1st in all district facilities, summer school staff working in the district out of summer. We're still keeping our no visitor policies in place. We're continuing our cleaning schedules already in place. When appropriate, available social distancing remain in place. Staff, committing a district safety protocol, you know, every Sunday afternoon, we still do that. And then summer school is going to be on-campus only, so our kids will not have the remote instruction option there. 21, 22 school year. Obviously, this is a way in the future. This too shall change. Don't hold us to it, but masks will be worn at the discretion of the individual again going into next year. At this time, on-campus learning only, we're going to get our kids back in our buildings. So no remote instruction options being planned at this time. And as we get closer to the start of school year, we're going to reevaluate everything else. Turn back down to August 2019 is our hope. And so that's what we're going to plan for, getting back to the normal we did before these past couple of years. Just wanted to give our staff an update, hopefully an update of what we're thinking. Big thing away from that is individual discretion is going to be somewhere in the past. District events, district facilities, you know, our graduation will be held here next week. So again, Dr. Power, she can't get that information out as appropriate. Provide y'all an update as those are in motion.
Item seven on the agenda's consent calendar consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, consideration of construction reports, and consideration of policy updates. Are there any other further, other further discussion or question on item seven? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar? Motion has been moved into the second. There will be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. This is, the motion is approved. Item eight on the agenda is consideration of the naming of high school number three. What's that about, Mr. Cowherd?
Yes, sir. Want to recommend that we name high school number three, West Fork High School. Follow all those recommendations, approve it and affirm it is set for certain.
And then the questions and further discussion. Is there a motion to approve the naming of high school number three? Motion has been moved into the second. There will be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. The motion is approved. Congratulations, West Fork Gators. Item nine on the agenda is consideration of approval of the 21, 22, comprehension, comprehension plan, compensation plan. Here we go. Presented out there for you, compensation plan. Presented by Ms. Brandy and Ms. Armentoz. I'll get about mint December. Brandy, is she there? I like the Louisiana shalit.
We'll go back to all the other compensation plans here back in. I'm sorry, we've seen the past changes of our set. We just wanted to highlight some of the major things. Starting pay for teachers is 59, and that's included a 2% GPI and a one-time pay that's still like two-time pay, $1,000, but $5 in November and $5 to make less taxes. That's the main thing. Everything else is a grand, happy question.
Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 comprehension?
Compensation.
Compensation plan.
Second.
Understood. So Mr. McCenter, Mr. Trout, standing in motion. Did we get first and second? We did, so motion, I mean, there will be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. The motion is approved. I'd like to finally say that from the board, that we certainly do appreciate all our teachers and hopefully they're listening at some point. All the staff, you know, all of our custodians, all the bus drivers, just everybody that worked over these last, you know, we did a lot of, you know, our cafeteria workers that came in during the summer to feed their kids. There were just so many, so many moving parts to get us through the spring, obviously to get us as best ready as we could be going into the fall and then just doing what we did to get through the fall semester, getting into the spring semester. And then trying to, as a board, you know, we're going to try to get us as normal as we can. And we hope to get back there as quickly as we possibly can. So we just appreciate, just everybody that works for us and the ones that, you know, that put their effort in to giving our kids the best that they can do. So we greatly appreciate everybody's effort in that. So Matt has one more small presentation before we meet.
And just an introduction for the group. We posted and added the position of Executive Director of Constructional Programs this year as part of the restructure, taking away the Deputy of Movement and Waste of things on Cabinet. And so I'm happy to announce tonight that Ms. Lauren Monroe has been named our new Director.
We are looking forward to that. It's going to be exciting. So there being no further, no further business. The meeting is adjourned at 8:43.